All right. Good evening, everyone. Seven o'clock, Monday, June 1st. Like to call the Clarence Central School Board of Education meeting to order. Just read a little bit of an opening comment before we get into the formal agenda. Per our last few meetings, we're conducting this meeting virtually per the governor's proclamation. In particular, tonight, the agenda listed as a special board meeting. This is to serve as the public budget presentation per executive order 202.15 that we are conducting virtually to inform our residents of the budget that is being presently voted on by absentee ballot. With that, I'm going to go down the board members just for roll call, just to acknowledge you're here. Matt?
Here.
Tricia?
Here.
Dennis?
Here.
James?
Here.
Dawn?
Here.
Mary Beth? Mary Beth, you there?
I'm here.
Thank you. And I'm here. And from the district, we have Dr. Hicks, Mr. Mancuso, Mrs. Overholt, and Mr. Michelle.
Mike, just one thing. Ethan Powers from the B is also on.
No. Good evening, Ethan.
Hi, Ethan.
Hey, folks, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Thank you. All right. So we've gone through roll call. Do we have any announcements? Hearing nothing. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
So moved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
I think I got Dennis first. All those in favor, I'll just run down as before. Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Sorry.
Oh, thank you. Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay. So moving forward on the agenda, the first item of business is correspondence. We have one item noted, a correspondence from Jenna Dipiskwali. Before I get into that, is Dr. Hicks, did we receive any additional correspondence through the website for tonight?
No, we did not, and we did not have any budget questions either, Mr. Fuge.
Thank you. Okay. With regards to the correspondence, typically, we just acknowledge or note when we receive an item of communication to the full board and the general topic. This particular communication, and given that individuals are not able to speak at the public session, was asked that we read this, so I will do so at this time. Again, this is a letter from Jenna Dipiskwali, received Tuesday, May 19th. It was addressed to all board members as copied to Dr. Hicks. I am writing to you, the subject is disappointing. I am writing to you to voice my disappointment in a letter to the editor article today, signed by three sitting members of the Clarence Board of Education. By providing your endorsement of candidates for the upcoming election, using your position as a Board of Election education member, I believe you have crossed an ethical line. While you may personally have political endorsements, I am shocked and alarmed by the blatant misrepresentation. Your job as elected official is to educate, not advocate. Below, you will find the issue that I am addressing from the New York State School Boards Association. And it's noted, employees and board members may not endorse initiatives or candidate speaking in their official capacity. She goes on to say, by signing the letter Clarence Board of Ed, you violated these ethical standards. I would hope there would be a retraction and apology in the upcoming Clarence B. I would like this correspondence to be included, read, and addressed at the upcoming June 1st Board of Education meeting. Regards Jennifer Dipiskwali. So with regards to being addressed, I will just make a couple of comments. On the day that this letter was written, that was the day the online publication was available through the website, the day prior to print. At the evening of the 19th, I did send a letter to Ethan Powers at the B requesting a clarification, as the board did not send that letter and waited for his response. I asked that it be corrected online, and if possible, corrected in the hard copy as well. Based on a response that we did receive from the B the following day, it was addressed to five individuals, myself being one of them. I'm not aware of all the exact nature of the other four correspondents, but the letter or the email response from the B did indicate that the tagline Clarence Board of Ed was not on the submission, and that it was a miscommunication internal to the B that it was included in the copy. He corrected the online publication immediately. And then on the May 27th issue of the B, they posted a correction which was published this past week. With that, I'll open it up to the floor if anybody has any comments. Okay. Hearing none, move forward. Next section is unfinished business. I'm not aware of any. Does anybody have any? Okay. Next is the superintendent's report. Dr. Hicks, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuge. I'm going to hand it directly off to Rick Mancuso, and he will run through the mandatory budget hearing. And while he does, I will plop open the PowerPoint that we are sharing. It's also available on the website.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Dr. Hicks. This budget hearing was officially owned by the governor from May 4th to tonight, June 1st. We start with the budget process. And this is repetitive, year to year. You know, the administration monitors the budget daily. Board of Education, as you know, oversees the budget and sets goals and priorities for the district. And Board of Education and administration already always welcome community input. There were formal, there were four months of formal budget presentations, January through April. And all the videos and information, as Dr. Hicks mentioned, is on our website. Basic goals and directives from the Board of Education are kind of true-tested for time. You know, protect and enhance the core programs of the district, and be fiscally responsible by preparing a sustainable budget at the tax cap. This year, there's a little additional information here. Because of the pandemic and the situation that we're in, we want to make sure that the budget this year is flexible. The governor may be reducing aid. We may or may not get some federal reimbursements. And as the economy picks up, hopefully in the very near future, there may be restorations if there are cuts. So our budget, while maintaining all the core programs and being under the tax cap, also has some flexibility in it. The expense budget is produced in three components, as required by New York State. Instruction, which by far is the largest part of the budget. It's all the instruction and transportation for our 5,000 students. The increases in this area are basically retirement cost increases because of the systems increase and the contractual work that we have for all of our employees. The second part, the capital, is really taking care of what we have. We have 900,000 square feet of buildings. We have 200 acres of land. And we also have debt service for all the capital projects that the community has approved throughout the years. Finally, the third section is administration. These are all the costs involved with supervision for all of the schools and everything in the district office and most of our insurances. The next screen is just a snapshot in the three-component system of the expenditure budget. As you can see, again, 65.7 million almost is instruction. And that's where we want to keep the bulk of our expenses student-driven. The total budget is up 2.96%. People always talk about the expenditure side, but there is always the revenue side. A balance, the budget has to be balanced. This year, because of limits for state aid, we are using an additional $300,000 from our balances to make the budget perfectly balanced. Everyone always wants to know about their taxes. The tax levy is just at 2.99%. It's under the tax cap, requiring a simple majority. However, there is proof district growth of over 1%. So our best estimate is that an existing home is only going to have an approximate 2% tax increase. Also on the ballot this year is purchase of six buses. You know, we have a 10-year replacement plan. We call it 10 years, but we are getting additional years out of our buses. You know, we have over 90 buses in our fleet. We extend them as best we can. And this year, we're requesting six buses to be purchased. New York State does reimburse us two out of every three down. So it's a minimal cost for debt service. Also on the ballot this year, we have three Board of Education seats up for election. We have five candidates, Tricia Andrews, Joshua Lin, Nikki Nazaro, John Patach, and Dawn Snyder. I do want to touch base a little bit. This year, New York State has determined that the best way to maintain maximum health and safety of community is by voting through absentee ballot only. Now, this process isn't new. We have absentee ballots every single year. It's the exact same process, only much larger. And in addition, the state has required us to actually mail without people requesting. So we mailed out 21,600 absentee ballots to our registered voters. And we're maintaining a list of an additional people who have requested it. Anyone who didn't get a ballot can contact us at the district office. We will mail one out. As it gets closer to the vote date, if mailing it out doesn't seem practical, people could always come into our office. We're open daily. Ballots do have to be received by the district no later than 5:00 on June 9th. And again, that's exactly the way absentee ballots were always done, except the date, the time of the day, has changed. I do want to touch base. I know with everything that's going on, sometimes we don't track of this, but this is a budget presentation, and I always want to remind people, we are in the top five for about the three most important financial categories. Cost-effectiveness, administrative efficiency. That administrative efficiency looks like, when you see the three-component budget, that all of the funds, the vast majority, are pushed to education, not running the district, and a lowest average spending. The last screen that we have is, please go to the website. There is a ton of information. Our newsletter is up there. We did mail the newsletter to everyone. But there is information on the budget, on the candidates, and on the vote process.
Thank you, Mr. Mancuso. Does anybody have any questions?
I do. Rick, originally, when the state passed their budget, we were told there were four. Since then, I've heard three different benchmark periods. And the first one was supposed to end April 30th. And at that point, they were going to let us look at their, they were going to look at their revenue and give us some kind of possible cuts. Have we heard, it's more than a month ago. Have we heard anything on that?
No, we haven't. And those, the three benchmark periods were April 30th, June 30th, and then the end of December.
Okay.
You know, the, we get word through the budget office that certainly we know their revenues aren't as high as they budgeted. I don't know what their expenses came in. But our take is that the governor is waiting to see what kind of federal monies are available before they make any of those announcements.
Okay.
Rick, I know that you, we've done absentee ballots in the past, but now for at this level that we have to deal with now, are there any guidelines that the state has put on you guys to make sure that there's like a list or keeping track of what's going on? And what, just for the community, what is our process when we take in these absentee ballots?
Sure. There is no additional guidance, but the guidance and the laws and the regulations regarding absentee ballots are still in existence. So an absentee ballot gets returned to the district in an affidavit envelope. Those are the envelopes we sent out to everyone with the printing on them. People must put their name and address on that envelope with the ballot inside it, and then sign that envelope. That's an affidavit. We do keep a log, as were required. So the 21,600 people who were mailed those, we keep a log as their return. Now, we do every year, even though obviously it's not to this amount, we get people who send back the ballot without that affidavit envelope. That ballot is not allowed to be counted. You need, we need to closely record every ballot that was sent out so that we can record every ballot that's sent back. If you received a ballot at your home and you didn't want to vote, and you gave it to somebody else at your household, and they put their name on the affidavit and sent it back, that vote is not going to count. We keep a strict list of, and in the past, it was a 300-person list. Now it's the 21,600. And we've got district treasurer and deputy treasurer and Board of Ed-appointed inspectors opening the return envelopes and logging who has returned the absentee ballots. Day of the vote, as those ballots are opened, you know, two inspectors are with every ballot. Inspector signs the envelope. The process is the ballot gets out of the envelope, is unopened by that inspector, is put in a pile, and then the other inspectors will unfold those so that no one can really see coded in any, in any manner. And then they're put upside down in a pile prior to scanning through the machines. Ballots, as you probably remember, can be scanned either, in either method, upside down or right-side up. So, you know, we, in the past, did the exact same thing, only on a lower scale. We now have more people and a much bigger task, but that same process.
And previously, we weren't sure we were going to actually have a voting scanning machine there. Can you verify that that process is going to take place?
Yes. We contacted, well, we are trying to be in contact with Erie County Board of Elections constantly. And we did get confirmation from them today that they will be sending us machines. And they just don't know yet the exact amount. Every day, we let them know how many ballots we get in so that they can gauge district to district. We originally asked for eight machines. And our last communication today gave us a high degree of confidence that we would get at least six.
So then we can, can we assume that we'll know if the budget passed that night? Because they'll come back and collect the machines? Is that the process that you're trying to?
Yes.
I know we've also heard that we might not know for a few days. So I'm just trying to get clarification.
You know, the, the process, if it takes a long time, it's because the number of machines and the number of ballots is a little disproportionate. We know that one machine can take six ballots per minute, or 360 ballots per hour. So as the number of machines, as we know by the end of this week, exactly how many machines we'll have, we will also then know by the end of Monday, exactly how many ballots we'll have. And we can do the calculation. And, you know, my plan would be, yes, we can get everything done and know that evening what the results are.
Who are the actual inspectors? Do we have to hire inspectors?
You, prior to all of this happening, you already appointed the board, the inspectors. So there are, I'm not sure the exact number, let's say 10 or 12 people that went through the board. I believe it was the March meeting, and those are your board inspectors.
Rick, that actual document isn't uploaded. I went into the March files, and somehow June is up there. Can you guys look into that and see?
Absolutely.
What happened there? Thanks.
Yes.
With regards to the absentee ballots, you referenced, if somebody requests one up, you know, they see this, this presentation or what have you, and realize they haven't gotten them, and the deadline is approaching, and they can pick one up at office, at the office? Just for clarity, anybody could drop them off there too, as well, correct?
Absolutely. Yes, they can be picked up or dropped off.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Where do you store all these ballots?
We have a secret locate, no, we, we put, we have a district office. We have two rooms that we lock up, and we set the alarm each night. One is our secure check room, and that's where we keep a lot of those items because of, literally, we keep our checks there.
What time can you start opening them? Is that, you can't start opening them until 5:00?
You know, I've gone back and forth with our attorneys, and people from Hudson Ross that I've talked to don't see that our process would not allow us to begin earlier in the day. And what we would want to do is back off the number of hours it would take to process the ballots due to the number of machines we have, and start sometime, I'm hoping, late morning. One of the nice things about it is the person that you appointed as the chairperson of the vote, Marla Weiss, is also an attorney at Hudson Ross.
Anybody else have any final questions for Rick? And correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, we do not, we're not necessarily accepting this. This is just for informational purposes for the public.
Absolutely.
I have one question. How many ballots received to this point?
I don't have an exact count, but by the number of ballot boxes that came in, we think we're near the 4,000 mark.
What's the record we had?
In 2012, I think, we had about 8,000 people voting. A normal year is under 3,000.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you, Rick.
You're welcome.
That concludes the report, Mr. Fuge.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. All right. Moving forward on the agenda, next item is board development policy. We have a number of informational items. First is to recognize a few of the board members for some award recognition that they've received for development work they've done through Erie County Association of School Boards and the New York State School Boards Association. So just going in the order on the agenda, first is to recognize Tricia Andrews for ECASB Shining Star Award that would have been bestowed upon her at the annual dinner on June 11th, which unfortunately is not taking place for the circumstance. The second is also an Erie County Association of School Boards Award. This one, the Medallion Club Award, presented to both Dawn Snyder and Dennis Piori. And then we have two awards from the New York State School Boards Association, School Board, University, Learning for Leaders, Board Achievement Awards, again, for participating in leadership development programs. The Board Achievement Award is presented to Dawn Snyder, and the Board Mastery Award is presented to Dennis Piori. Congratulations, all of you, for obtaining these recognitions.
Thank you.
The second item that takes care of B1, B2 is a board handbook that's listed as informational for initial review. Just a couple of quick comments. So the attached document that was in our packet, again, just for everybody's, for the public certification, was really, came out of some development training that the board participated in over the winter and into, into the spring. Really going through that, it became clear that there would be some benefit to memorializing some certain procedures, not only for existing board members, but also for any new board members, as we recognized a gap in some onboarding that has been experienced over the last couple of years. So we went through a number of sessions talking about various elements. Mr. Stock volunteered to take those notes and put together the first draft of the handbook, which is enclosed, before opening it up in general. Matt, do you have any comments relative to what you prepared?
Sure. Thanks. Yeah. So what I attempted to do is take the feedback, as you mentioned, in our board development and try to capture it. So the way that I laid it out, and you can see it in the packet, is the early piece is focused on things that new board members need, and particularly are focused around that bootstrapping process at the very, very beginning of, you know, becoming a board member, particularly things like the different roles and the reorganization meeting and those kinds of things. And then the tail end of the handbook is about information gathering and the budget process, and how to use email, and all of these things that, you know, can be ambiguous or unclear for new and existing board members. So, you know, it's certainly not comprehensive, but it's an attempt to kind of, kind of put together all of the pieces. And so this, the intent here was just to give it a first look, and then we'll have more time for additional commentary at the, at the next meeting. But if there's any, any feedback folks want to make, I can certainly incorporate that and make notes before the next meeting.
Hey, Matt, this is James. You did a great job on it. I started reading it and marking it up. Would you mind if I just sent you my markups? I can email them to everyone.
Yeah. Send it to everybody, but please do, and I'll incorporate them.
I'll get them to you by the early next week.
So I was going to make a comment. I mean, similar to what we do with policies, this is almost like a first read. And if, you know, you're willing, which it just sounds like you are, Matt, if we get any feedback we'd like to share, you can take responsibility to, you know, get this updated to a, more of a discussion document for us to have available at the next meeting.
Yep. I can do that.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
Mike, is this?
For taking this role on, Matt, it was a lot of work, I'm sure.
Dawn, you had something?
Um, yes. Mike, is this document supposed to be included in the packet? Because I know we have it in our board packet, but it's not in the public packet. Or do we not include it in the public packet until it's a final draft?
That's what I thought, Dawn. That's my, that was my decision. When I put up the public packet, I left it out because it's a draft. We normally don't put draft stuff up there, even with.
We do draft, we do put drafts of policy, though, right?
Well, we put, usually what we'll do is we'll put the strike through with the new language. Or we didn't have any strike through or new language.
But it's fair to say, if we're going to be looking to act on anything, whether it be at the next board meeting or a meeting after, we'll want to include that for the public to see.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody have anything else at this time?
Can I ask, Ethan, Ethan is on the call. If he has any questions about anything for the board meeting, he can ask them now.
Sounds good.
Any questions?
I was on mute. Sorry about that. Yeah, I guess I'm not as millennial as I'd like to think I am.
Yeah, I guess I'm not as millennial as I'd like to think I am. So Dr. Reese, I don't know who actually could answer this. You mentioned last week that, you know, the sending out of, of the 22,000 absentee ballots was going to be a costly endeavor for the district. And that doing so could total a bill of potentially 60,000. Have you guys added up the numbers yet in regard to an overall cost?
Yeah, it's probably not going to end up being that high. Rick, can you answer that question, please?
I, I would say that my first estimate right now, without going through everything, is, is going to be in the 30 to 40,000 dollar range. And again, we won't know everything until, we're still sending absentee ballots out. You know, printing costs and things like that are, are not all paid yet.
Gotcha, gotcha. Rick, isn't, didn't I not read someplace that this is possibly a FEMA reimbursed expense as well?
Uh, we will put it through with our FEMA reimbursement. The, the FEMA people, I think most of what they're geared towards is, is true public safety. And we don't think that they're going to allow every district to recover these kinds of voting expenses that the state is requiring, but we're going to, we're going to submit it.
And now, Rick, would that, would that cost essentially be fund balance that would be utilized?
You know, throughout the, the last, you know, from the middle of March, excuse me, we, we've saved monies for not transporting students and various other things like that. So movement of internal accounts like that will cover this.
Sure. I actually have, actually just one more question if I have time, sorry. You know, obviously you mentioned the massive difficulties in, in trying to get this many ballots out to people. What have been the main kind of logistical challenges in, in getting the, the, you know, the votes to the homes? I mean, it seems like a, a kind of Sisyphean task to, you know, require significant manpower to do this. Have there been any difficulties so far in, in preparing that many more ballots this year?
You know, we, we use a printer that we've used for all of our community education mailings. And so, so that task is costly, but it wasn't so difficult. The difficult task now is as these thousands of ballots come back to make sure that we're meticulous in recording them and have enough manpower to do that prior to the vote.
Are you calling people to help you with that?
Yes, I mean, we, you know, our office staff is large enough and their regular jobs are going to be at a standstill till this is done.
Do we have staff coming back in then, the buildings?
We've, we've called in all of the office staff that we need to do that, but just in our district office.
That's all I have. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, if nothing more, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the contractual compensation of a particular, of particular employees. Do I have motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. I'm going to go down. All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right, that concludes our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks.
Take care.
All right, Mike, I stopped the, I stopped.